All right, follow meeting order. And that's invocation of pledge, and it will be led by Will Anderson of the Lighthouse Charter.
Lead with prayer, obviously, spitting tonight, pray for our election. Also, as well as our meeting, so let's have a word of prayer, and then we say the pledge of allegiance, Lord. God, we pray over this great nation right now. God, we pray for our election, those that are involved. God, we pray, Lord, your hand and your wisdom in that tonight, we pray over this meeting and these great people and our city commissioners, manager and councilman here tonight, Lord, that you would allow your presence to be in this meeting tonight, that you would give us wisdom, Lord, and that you would help us to navigate smoothly tonight. And let the, let this great city, Lord, become all that you have destined it to be, in Jesus' name, amen. Amen. Let's stand, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Open call.
I do not have any questions.
Okay, special presentations and announcements. I don't want to administer a well, police officer, Courtney Nichols, our attorney, or city manager, or the chief, or whoever.
City secretary is going to swear in your honor. You want to come on up? Right, just right here in front of me, until we're going to Mr. O' the office first, and he'll just have you raise your right hand, repeat after me. I say your name.
I, Courtney Nichols.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties of the office.
Of the office.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas. And I will, to the best of my ability.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state. So help me God.
So help me God. All right, and then last one, which is going to be your statement of office, okay? Repeat after me. I say your name.
I, Courtney Nichols. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear. That I have not directly.
That I have not directly.
Or indirectly.
Or indirectly.
Paid.
Paid.
Offered.
Offered.
Promised to pay.
Promised to pay.
Contributed.
Contributed.
Or promised to contribute.
Or promised to contribute.
Any money or thing of value.
Any money or thing of value.
Or promise any public office.
Or promise any public office.
Or employment.
Or employment.
For the giving or withholding.
For the giving or withholding.
Of a vote.
Of a vote.
At the election at which I was elected.
At the election in which I was elected.
Or as reward.
Or as a reward.
To secure my appointment.
To secure my appointment.
Or confirmation.
Or confirmation.
Whichever the case may be.
Whichever the case may be.
So help me God.
So help me God.
We're very fortunate, because Officer Nichols has been a long part of our organization, because she, we've sent her to the academy. And like I said, it's really great to have somebody that brings experience, knowledge, and she's been working our property room. As we go forward, she's been a, just a great asset just in the days ahead, so we're really looking forward to her contribution, and like I said, she's already been a part of our, our team, and it's really something to see, that we're bringing in those good qualified candidates, so we're going to be very blessed to have her on our team. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. We'll go to the staff report, turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, I think my phone, but they are inside. I did want to just give you a couple of updates on the street improvement project, and this is phase one. As a reminder, we went out for, took figures of obligations for this. The majority of the eight points, six million dollars is going towards the streets, and that's going to be around seven point four. The other portion went towards the parks and public works facilities. So they have started on this project, and just wanted to give you an update again, as I reported before. They're working, they started with Harvey. Harvey is concrete project, and unfortunately, it really serves as a drainage channel, which is why it is concrete. So it carries all the water, it actually flows north from there, from like all of mistletoe area back there, north down Harvey, and then it takes a slight turn on Harlem, and then goes north into the creek there. So they are working on that, they're trying to get the intersection of Elliott and Harvey completed, that they were out there pouring today. Once they get that poured and it's cured, they will open Elliott up, and then they're also working on the concrete aprons at the intersection of Harvey and Harlem. And once they get those poured, we did have some issues with a water leak, because what, if you have vehicles running over, these water lines that are old, not buried deep, they can spring a leak, and that's what happened, so we had some water repairs to do on the west side. But once they get that done, to pour that concrete, and they think weather dependent, which unfortunately, fortunately, unfortunately, we've had some rain. So that's delayed it a little bit, but once they do that, then, then they'll start on Harvey proper. But Elliott will then be open to traffic. Harvey will take their estimating again, depending on weather, four to eight weeks for that one project. Meanwhile, what they've done is they started in the northwest quadrant, and listed the streets there, doing all the prep work. So most of these streets are going to be level ups and asphalt overlays. They are doing a little bit of drainage work as well, so clean and off the side, but they started with all the prep work. There is some tree trimming going on, I've had some questions about that. But they're going from the northwest to the northeast, to the southeast, over back to the southwest quadrant. They are looking at starting to pave, weather dependent Thursday. It's supposed to rain Thursday and Friday, although it's supposed to rain, you know, these past weekend, and you know, it didn't rain as much as we initially thought, so. They are making good progress, but people, we just want to make sure people are aware that it is going on all over, so.
I know, I was on Flint, I think just last weekend, last Friday or something like that. Are they, they combed off Harvey, and Harvey and Jeanette really well, right, blocked all that. But like on Flint, there was piles left in the middle of the street, nobody to be seen in blocks in any direction. Is there, I mean, do we need to have them comb those areas?
Yeah, I'll definitely get with them. I mean, I did call them, because yeah, there was another issue that somebody called me about, so if you see something like that, yes, please let me know, or if any constituents.
Actually called one of the city employees and said, y'all, tearing up something over here, and then, no, that's not it. Oh, okay, thanks, then I realized. It, it was Flint and over by east.
Yeah.
So there was, they've cleaned it up since, but that day we were coming through, like I said, there were just monstrous piles from the scraping. And then also from all the grass and dirt that had grown over, and they just kind of left it in the middle of the street and go, oh, somebody's going to hit this.
Good to know, so just let me know, and that way I can make sure that I get with them, and they're really good about responding, so. Yeah, so I just wanted to give you an update on that, so that's going well. And then the downtown revitalization project, which you see over here, that is basically sidewalks and ADA accessibility on all of those corners. They were initially hoping to be done this weekend, but I mean, this week, but again, with the weather, it has pushed it out, and they're still projecting. And they work hard a lot today, but they're still projecting that they could be done next Wednesday. But again, that's going to be weather dependent, so that, you know, that's the grant that we did for five hundred thousand, so that project is well on point. That's all I've got on those, and just if you want to cover up the upcoming notes.
So this coming Monday, on the eleventh, city offices will be closed in observance of Veterans Day. Also, on the fifteenth and the sixteenth, the next week, the chamber, the mingle jingle, Christmas tree lighting, then as well. So everybody comes out for that, make that a big turnout. The twenty first is.
I was, Yudi, did you want to say something about the mingle jingle?
Just that we decided to add another, it's called the mingle jingle passport, so that's going to be a new little thing that we started, and everyone will receive a passport, you got to go to all the participating businesses to get a stamp, enter to win the big prize, so we got that going on too, so another extra thing.
Shop local.
Shop local, yes, please.
The twenty first, again, is bulk pickup, Thursday, every month. That, again, they have to sign up the Friday before, they can sign up online, you can sign it via text mic of on your phone. You can call up here and sign up, and then on the twenty eighth and the twenty ninth, city offices will also be closed in observance of Thanksgiving and the day after Thanksgiving, so.
Thank you, ma'am. Employee of the month, Wesley Dugan.
I'm going to have his supervisor, Stacy, our public services director.
Oh, we have fun, that's a good thing, but all the departments around here are like family. And, but I'm very prejudiced to mine, and I've got some good employees. Wesley has been with us since two thousand eight, working for us. He spent about eight years working for the city of Graham, and then came over and went to work for us. And he's kind of my right-hand man, and he's always the first one in, the last one out, and drives over on the weekends and does different things, and so Wesley, if you'll come on up here. We want to talk about our, our BRAC acronyms, and that, you know, be bold, be responsible, be excellent, be compassionate, be knowledgeable. And Wesley, for demonstrating our core values, we make you the employee of the month. I thank you very much.
Nope, nope, you got to get in there. Good job, Wes.
Good job, Wesley.
I'm going to say one word about Wesley, there's a lot of good words. Don't run off.
You want to hear this?
His dad had a wrecker service for years and years, and of course, I've known Wesley and all of them since the day they were born, but this kid and his brother, when they were just kids, they'd come out on calls with their dad and help him pick up wreck cars and stuff. So he has worked, he knows what work is, and he dang sure isn't good at it. You take care of both. Be no action on that. We'll go to the consent agenda. Any commission member made request, an item on the consent agenda can be taken up for individual consideration. If y'all look at items five, six, seven, and eight, and one of y'all, when you're ready, you'll make a motion on that, then please.
I move to approve consent agenda items five to eight as presented, let's see.
Motion second, all in favor? Aye, none opposed, thank you. Action items, nine discussed, and any necessary action regarding approval, BEDC annual report.
So we've got David Miller here with the EDC to present the annual report.
Thank you, Commissioners and Mayor. I'm going to hit some of the high points in this, probably number six, seven, eight. A couple of weeks ago, I got the opportunity to go to Orlando. The International Economic Development Council has a certification for economic developers, and I got to finally start that training, to credit analysis and real estate development reuse, to very, very useful topics for recordage where we are right now. As far as the, the state of our economy and recordage, the, the biggest piece I can say is that we're kind of in a waiting seat, we're, we're in kind of a lull where people are deciding whether or not they're going to spend money, how much, where are they going to spend that money, where they're going to pick the most profitable places to put their businesses. As we look back over the last six months, the biggest factor I can point to is that construction has slowed dramatically, so building materials, concrete, stuff like that, has not sold as much. On our manufacturing side, again, this is our bread and butter, this is where we make the biggest impacts for our communities on the manufacturing side. Of those, Ox Manufactory is doing their expansion, and so the next agenda is going to be an incentive agreement that we have for them. They're looking at adding twenty-five jobs over the next year. They've already added like eight. RGN manufacturing, you may have seen over the last couple of weeks that RGNs had kind of a lull out there, that's because they're in the process of selling. RG manufacturing is now under a new ownership with a group out of Austin. They're expecting to add up to a hundred and twen- not add, they're expecting to get to a hundred and twenty jobs over the next year. That could be an extra sixty jobs over where we were just a few weeks ago. So between the two of those, we're looking at eighty-five new jobs coming to recordage, manufacturing jobs. I include in here just prospect, just to get your kind of a knowledge of, we do have other big things out there. It's not common that we get to, to be a part of them, but we were one of three cities that one manufacturer was looking at. Just put it on your radar that this kind of stuff happens, and they're usually pretty big. This one was a five hundred million dollar development that just got put on pause. Maybe it comes back around, we're waiting for the legislature. But just to put that out there, we've got a ton of land all around us, just waiting for some development. EZPAC, we have an incentive with EZPAC for job creation, but also retention. They maintained eighty-four jobs last year on a, on a payroll basis, so we evaluate the number of full-time employees based off of their payroll number, so that would be eighty-four jobs, not specifically people, but rather based off their payroll. And added thirteen new jobs. We approved a job and creation incentive for nettings, it's a new, it's a new kind of incentive for us to look at restaurants, it's just the sheer number of them, thirty to forty people. We've got a piece of that that we need to clarify at our next meeting, so you'll, you'll see that again here coming up. Of course, we have pretty many things happening in the accommodations and the retail development side, as you can read in there. We are really just waiting for other people to give us some info, but the interest is there from all the parties. Ridgecrest apartments sold a few weeks ago, so there's a, an out-of-town group that just purchased those, and we're really hoping that they'll bring, there are twenty-six vacant units there, we're really hoping they'll renovate every one of them, not just the twenty-six, but all the units there, have an additional twenty-six rental units in recordage would be amazing. There are dairy shoot piece, it's been a long time coming. I know that he just partnered with another investor a few weeks ago, and so that has closed. They, they've got that heated over to where there's now, that property's in a partnership. Hopefully, that'll start seeing some movement on the planning and development side. The vacant lot at one seventeen West Walker, TMCM Kids have hit their deadline for getting that judge, and I don't know, do you, do you know when we'll find out that they win?
November thirteenth.
And if you haven't been out there, we, the shade cells succumbed to the wind the other day, and so we're in the process of seeing if those are placed. But the seating is just spot on for the kind of community environment, especially coming up with Mingle Jingle Parade and stuff like that. Of course, you saw, a few weeks ago, we, or months ago, we approved our short-term, short-term rental, the vacant to vibrant. There's interest, but of course, those are really big with all the dollars, and so they're going to be slower moving. One other thing about downtown, that Blake already knows about, is our work on the Nettie's Building and with our facade brand program, the hustle of the downtown development council, we won best economic game changer for a population of fifty thousand and under at Texas Downtown's annual award gala. So it's a, you think about how big a fifty thousand population is, the competition was steep, it was very steep. And so it's, it's very rewarding to know that all that work has been recognized. And, and really, it's a, it's a giant marketing piece for us, you know, we now have a award-winning downtown that we can market, and looking at the competition for the other kinds of projects that were submitted, I think we'll win some more awards this next year. Financials, I want to just note a couple of things. We, we're at one point three million in our cash. We've got two, really probably three million in real estate. There is an allowance for bad debt, I expect that this audit, this will go away, because one of them we have a judgment for, and the other one is paying, so there's not an allowance needed there anymore, which brings the EDC to a total of billions in equity of about four million dollars. On our budget, just noted a couple of things that we are, we didn't hit our sales tax budget by seven thousand six hundred dollars, but we also had some found money in rental income, which was eight thousand, so we, income-wise, brought in far more than what we expected. On the expense side, we did not have near as much happen as last year is what we hoped for. So we had planned for a ninety-one thousand dollar dig into our reserves. We ended up with a surplus of a hundred and two thousand, so there was about two hundred thousand dollars in spending that didn't happen this last year, which, as I told my board, is a signal of, we are willing, we're just needing people to step up and use us to get set down. Any questions on the report?
On the, the new owner of the Ridgecrest, have y'all spoken to each other, like is that promising at all?
Yes, so there's more to that conversation.
Okay.
That's more on the negotiation side, but yes, we had talked with them, they've given us a, a request, and now it's, you know.
Negotiated, I'll forget too, like, there's currently giving them prices on a local level.
Yeah, I will say this, they bought it without ever coming to us, so.
I think that's great, the award, especially when you look at the size town we are in, and I say up to fifty thousand, that covers a lot of big, big cities.
And there are a lot of cities that are right next to DFW, next to Austin, I mean, next door, that are under fifty thousand, that are next door to two million, seven million people, and so, yeah, it goes really long, right?
That's neat, that is, that is, David. No question, brother. Alrighty, last for motion on that?
I move to approve the EDC annual report as presented.
Second, motion second, all in favor? Aye, none opposed, thank you. I don't tend to discuss any necessary action regarding approval of BEDC recommendation to approve Ox manufacturing incentive, so we'll give it to you again, David.
So Ox is planning on adding those twenty-five jobs. That is an estimated one point three million a year more in payroll. I was talking about this earlier, in manufacturing, in economic development, we're looking at manufacturing job with a multiplier effect, which is basically whenever somebody lives here, earns a dollar, and spends that dollar here, how many times does that dollar really get passed around locally? And for manufacturing here on, we usually use multiplier five, which means that that one point three million is more like seven million in payroll that goes around in, in recordage. With this incentive, we're, we're looking at that increase in payroll, but also we're directly incentivizing the addition of capital improvements to the building, which means increased property tax revenue as well, which is something that recordage definitely needs more property tax values, not necessarily more taxes, just buildings, values adding to the rolls. With the, the number of the two hundred thousand, we expect that that loan will be kind of right on the money. We were thinking might be a little, as I talked to him earlier, that's really right where it's going to be at. And the way that we've structured this, it is completely dependent, that incentive on those twenty-five jobs happening. And even with the twenty-five jobs, it, it isn't quite safe of that fold.
Is, if you know, what is the production of Ox right now, what are they turning out, or are they kind of, kind of in a slow time of the year?
Oh, no, so what is happening right now with Ox is that one of their chief clients has asked for them to take up all manufacturing of the amounts that they make. And so what they're gearing up for with this is their production being five hundred percent more over the next year. And so they were doing, I think it's a little over a million in production. I don't quite remember, I don't know the exact number, I'm guessing a little bit, but they're expecting for that to be five, even ten times as much in the next year, but three years.
Explain the smile on his face. I said, that explained the smile on his face.
That's one client. What, what's happening is he's also bringing on more machinery where he can do more. And so if, as he goes after more clients, which he's, he's got a foot in the door with several of them, then his production could really grow quite immensely, and the long-term opportunities of having a gun parts manufacturer with this kind of production happening in Texas could, could very well be a bigger deal later on.
No questions? Not, add some motion on that, please?
Move to approve the BEDC recommendation to approve Ox manufacturing's incentive as presented.
Second, motion second, all in favor? David, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work and effort, I witness, guy. Go to item eleven, discussion any necessary action regarding approval of resolution twenty, twenty-four dash thirty-three, authorizing the submission of a two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six CDVG application to the Texas Department of Agriculture. Now give it to city manager.
Thank you. Mayhem Commissioners, as you know, in the last meeting, we brought to you the RFP for awarding of the administration services, and it was awarded to public management, and this is a CDVG grant. We applied for it on the last time, we scored pretty high, but we didn't make it, so we're going back and we're, we're pretty confident that we're going to make it. The good news is, is that we're, we're keeping the same projects, and this will be Panther Street and Fourth, but we'll be adding more to it, because instead of a five hundred thousand dollar grant, it's now a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, and we kind of talked about that last month as well. So anyways, this is the actual next step in submitting the application. Look, that's what, that's the action tonight, is your approval to submit that actual application.
Motion on that, then?
I move to approve resolution completely four dash thirty-three, authorizing the submission of the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six CDVG application of the Texas Department of Agriculture as presented.
Motion second, all in favor? None opposed. Item twelve, discussion any necessary action regarding approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-two, appointing member to the Board of Adjustments.
Okay, so our Board of Adjustments is a seven-member, seven-member board, it consists of five regular members and two alternates. They do work on staggered terms, every, every two years. This year, Brian Wood, Michael Ellis, and Bonnie Robbins, their term is set to expire at the end of November. After speaking with them, Michael Ellis and Bonnie Robbins have chosen to be reappointed, but Brian Wood chose to step down from his position. Also, earlier in the year, Bo Asher, he moved away, which left his position vacant, so that did leave us with two vacancies on the Board of Adjustment. We sent out, trying, you know, looking for volunteers for boards, and we did have some applicants. And what we have in, in the resolution today is recommending Rocky Fame to be appointed to replace Brian Wood, and that John Powell be appointed to fill the remaining alternate term that Bo Asher was holding, and that term actually expires in November of twenty twenty-five. So the way that it's set up is that Rocky Fame's would be for the two-year term that Brian Wood would have had, and then the. So, um, the way that it's set up is that Rocky Fans would be for the two-year term that Brian Wood would have had and then be, um, yes, right, they're both, they're both in, and they aren't here, don't have any questions for them or anything, they did want to come and meet with you guys. Um, so that's what's for you and. That gets us pulled up and we'll be happy to have them tomorrow again.
Did your sister get all the information?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Thanks for having me in your consideration and I'm Rocky Fame, Breckenridge resident, born and raised. And I retired last year from the active duty Navy, you know, nuclear submarine pilot. And I work here remotely for the government as a cloud architect and cybersecurity consultant. So hopefully, uh, you can make good use of my services, you know, as we integrate with the big community again, so thanks for having me.
I grew up with Rocky and finding out that, you know, that was him and he was in charge of a nuclear submarine. What Friday.
And we have John Powell, he is here as well.
So I'm a, a new resident fairly of, of Breckenridge, we moved here last June from the Garland D F W area. Um, I'm a board certified oncology pharmacist by training. I work for Bayer Pharmaceuticals, not Chevy D. Uh, as a lead medical science liaison, so I worked with those doctors around the country, setting up research, providing education, those sorts of things, and, uh, just looking to get involved with the community a bit more.
Well, would you take a wrong turn and find us out here or? It's good to have you.
She discovered the house and fell in love with it and.
Okay.
She has family out in Maryland, Odessa.
Yeah, I love my house.
No, the V, the V up there.
Oh, no, we don't go there.
My bad, my bad. I'm sitting there going, oh, wait a minute.
No, I met you from Honda though.
Yes.
At Fun Arts.
Both have a motion on that or any other questions?
Moved to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty two as presented.
Second, most in second, all in favor? Aye, aye, none opposed, thank you guys.
So at the next meeting, um, I will have, we will come in contact and next meeting we'll have you all come in to your open office.
Go down thirteen, discussion any necessary action regarding approval of an interlocal for fire services with the Stevens County.
So Mayor Commissioners, as you know, we had a joint meeting with the county commissioners, we have several interlocals. Um, we discussed several of them, this is, uh, for the fire, uh, interlocal. The only change in the agreement to this, as we discussed in that meeting, was, um, the county is going to pay half of the overtime budgeted for the year. Um, this year, for instance, the amount budgeted for overtime is forty six thousand five hundred. And so if we, whatever we use, maybe we won't use all of that, but I think most times we do, but they would pay for half of that. And then the other change is that we'll pay for half of the deductible for insurance. Um, what is not changing, those are the only two changes in the agreement. What's not changing is, um, the county pays for half of all vehicle maintenance and fuel for all um, vehicles and equipment. Um, and so when we talk about vehicles and equipment, that was the concession that was made. We pay for the city, then pay for half of the deductible, because it goes through their insurance. Um, and so those are the only changes in the interlocal that you see before me.
He doesn't get a raise, does he?
They took you out of my salary.
Took it out of Bob's.
You know, in, in the past, the county only paid half of their trucks, fuel and maintenance, and now they're going to pay for all of them.
Well, yeah, no, actually in the agreement, they were supposed to pay for all, but for whatever reason, it was an administrative snafu that they were only being.
That's why I had to kind of read back very, wanted to hear that, because I misunderstood that a little bit.
Yeah, that was an admin, but that, that's always been that way, but for whatever reason, it wasn't applied that way until.
Well, I, I just, long before y'all come around, I remember there, there were some discussions about all that years ago, it was.
It wasn't very pretty.
No, it was not pretty, no, it was, so things have gotten a lot, lot better.
Well, we're very thankful for their cooperation on this and we appreciate their partnership.
I'm moved to approve the interlocal for municipal, oh, just kidding, moved to approve interlocal for the fire services of Stevens County as presented.
Motion second, all in favor? Aye, aye, none opposed, thank you. I'm fourteen, discussion in necessary action regarding approval of an interlocal for municipal courts services.
So this is another one, um, there's only two changes here, um, one of the things that we discussed was, um, paying, um, basically, um, the county, uh, the city will pay six hundred dollars per month for the J P services. Um, and then the other change on here is it started out as a two-year and reviewed every two years. Um, this is actually, uh, reviewed annually. So those are the only two changes to the agreement. The other thing in this one, um, we pay half of the office supplies essentially, so, uh, and that's not changing.
We were paying, we pay for one of the rules in the office, correct, in, in Steve's office.
Well, that's our employee.
That's right, okay, so then this is just, we're now paying for.
We're paying, so, yeah. The J P will get.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's, um, basically, I think in light of we're doing, you know, we project to do increased code enforcement as we onboard a code enforcement officer.
Um, moved to approve interlocal for municipal court services as presented.
Second, most in second, all in favor? Aye, aye, none opposed, thank you. Out of fifteen, discussion any necessary action regarding awarding construction of temporary housing quarters for the Breckenridge Fire Department.
So I do want to review this, and I know we've talked about it several times, um, and, you know, we put information out there, but I do want to make sure people understand, you know, the action that's being taken. Um, so just to review, we did, um, create an ad hoc committee made up of community members and members of the fire department, really to just review, um, some brainstorm solutions to the living conditions of the fire department over in the, in the fire department building, it's an older building. Um, and the conditions over there are less than stellar, let me put it that way. And so, um, we really, we really wanted to address that and get these, um, guys and gals, uh, uh, potentially in, in good quarters. So it's a three-step process, it's three phases. And again, the committee all agreed on that, and you guys came and we presented the proposal to you and you approved it. So the proposal is step one, phase one is placing temporary living quarters on the parking lot to the north of the building. And, um, step two then would be to demo the existing fire station. And step three then would be to construct a modest metal building on the remaining slab. And so this is just step one, we did do an R F P, we did get two, uh, two, uh, proposals. And you see them in the background information, one of those, and I'm just going to highlight them, but one was from Cotton Commercial, and that was essentially ninety seven thousand nine hundred ninety eight is basically a twelve-month lease. So it would be that amount annually. Um, and then we've got a, a proposal from R G N slash, as he said, it was being bought out during this time, but R G N slash, um, the new title is Breckenridge Homes, and that cost is sixty seven nine two five, and that's to purchase a building. Um, so I did want to say that in their bid, they did add tax to that, so it was really seventy thousand one hundred ninety seven. But we subtracted that tax out because we don't charge tax, so that is why it's sixty seven nine two five. So it's different than what you, you see in your, in the background information, I just wanted to bring that out. But this is a purchase, so, um, it's going to be temporary, it could be anywhere from two to three years, I would hope it wouldn't go too much beyond three years. Um, but by the time we do this, the next step then will be to, um, do an R F P for the demo. Um, we have an O P C there of a hundred and fifty thousand. Um, and then once that happens, then we've got to get it, we're, um, talking with the county. They've got a grant, uh, writer that is looking for grants to help partner with us in the, um, cost of that, and we're estimating that to be a modest metal building, anywhere from five hundred thousand to one point five, probably around a million, give or take, um, is what we're estimating, um, and hoping for. So, but we'll obviously go out for bid on that when the time comes.
And you went over and looked at the housing that they're proposing, the, the, the purchase of the temporary housing?
Yeah.
Yeah, you had a look that it works for.
Yes, well, they, they had to adjust the floor plan, plan to make it two big rooms.
Right.
One ba-, uh, dorm room and one kitchen living room. And that, that price is included with it, it's an A C, the moving, setting up, blocking, tying down.
Yeah.
And the city would hot, pick, hook up the water, sewer and electric.
But you stay in the building and the guys get that, okay?
Um, hey, so, so we are recommending, um, that you guys award to below the best, which was also R G N slab.
Also local, yeah, right, no.
Yeah, yeah.
We need to keep them in port.
Yeah, yeah.
It was a purchase, not just a one-year.
Yes.
I move to approve the proposal for the construction of temporary housing quarters to Breckenridge Homes and authorize the city manager to execute the documents.
Second.
Most second, all in favor? Aye, none opposed, thank you. Out of sixteen, discussion any necessary action regarding approval of an updated social media policy for the city of Breckenridge.
So this is a policy, basically, we already have a social media policy. Um, but the governor has come out with the state statute requiring local governments, um, to basically not, I mean, put in their policies that we will not basically, uh, have anything to do with TikTok. Okay, I don't know if you know the background there, but, um, there's concern with the ownership and all of that. So, um, it's, it's making us compliant with state statute. Um, and we did take the opportunity to expand the policy. Um, and we just incorporated some more, um, best practices that are really common across local governments throughout, um, throughout the state, really the nation. So you have that before you and, um, those are the updates.
I've never heard of some of the other ones.
I'm sorry.
I said, said part of I've never even heard of some of the other ones. You know, we had to, I mean, and I'm sure y'all are going to have to talk to the I T people, like we have it, TikTok is blocked at the, at the, the firewall and on the content filter and on the computers. And then it's also on, I mean, we've got like seven different levels and I had to add it in on each level so that nobody can.
Yes, yes.
Take care of all this, though. Well, I've got a team of people. Uh, moved to approve the updated social media policy as presented.
Both in second, all in favor? Aye, aye, none opposed. All right, item seventeen, discussion in necessary action regarding approval of updates to section nine point oh four, workers' compensation of the personnel policy. Turn it back.
So we are bringing this, as you know, we, we're going through our policies, um, and ordinances, and we're updating those as we see things. Um, this is something that, um, a lot of cities really in, in trying to have a good policy for our employees that also protects us and, um, doesn't put us in a, a, you know, a risk averse situation. So, um, this, to be clear, this would not affect anybody who's on workers' comp right now, okay? It would only be going, uh, if you approve it, it would only be in place going forward. And essentially, um, most cities pay seventy percent with workers' comp, that's what's required by state statutes. Um, some cities do pay a hundred percent. Um, so when a worker is injured on the job, um, that wage is reimbursed to them at a hundred percent for us right now currently. Um, in addition to that, um, it, our, we have a time of twenty four weeks, um, which is a lot, most cities don't have twenty four weeks, most cities are twelve weeks. Um, and so it's hard when you have somebody that is almost, you know, double F M L A, right? And so, um, it does run concurrently with F M L A on the first twelve weeks, but then it's another, um, you know, twelve weeks if it's required that they're off the job. And if we don't have, um, I mean, that means that job not getting done. And so that can present a hardship to the city. Um, so I am bringing it for you to consider, um, changing that policy, um, to seventy percent that we pay. Um, now keep in mind, we also have the injured in the line of duty, so according to state statute, first responders are covered at a hundred percent. So that, that will, that's what that line of injured in the line of duty policy, that's what that will do. So they would be paid at that hundred percent.
We have a couple of questions on this one. Um, without going into any detail, do we, statistically, do we have a lot of workmen's comp out right now?
And we have.
Are they staying out that duration of twenty four weeks or is it, they're back in a week or two?
We recently had one, and yes, we have another one, um, and we have in the past, and when you look at our, excuse me, it impacts our insurance, right? So it also impacts our, it impacts our insurance. And so when you look at the cost of what we pay for workers' comp, it's pretty high. Um, and what they do is they, um, they annualize, um, and then they give you a score.
Yeah.
And based on that score, you know, what your rates are going to be, right? And so, again, it's just, it's one of ten, we're being fair, um, but we're also being reasonable, especially larger cities, it is more common for them to pay a hundred percent. And actually, twenty four weeks is not common, I will say that. Um, but in larger cities, if, if you see that, you see it more in larger cities versus smaller, because that is a hardship on smaller cities.
We have less people and less resources.
Right.
I mean, all.
I mean, our staff isn't that big.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, so that's why I'm bringing it forward, um, you know, again, I think it's fair, it's in compliance with state statute. Um, injured in the line of duty, so first responders, I mean, they will be compensated at a hundred percent. Um, if they're injured on, on, on the line of duty.
One more just thought on them, and then the, uh, we've all been around long enough, you know, with the pay raises and things we were able to give, we all sort of pretty much agree that it'd be nice to be able to do more. We obviously limited resources, we know that. But when it comes to incentive, at least in my mind, when you work for a city, it's not always the pay. Let's be honest, but there is retirement incentives, knowing that, you know, your job's secure because nobody's going to close the city, in theory. Um, does it, do you think this will have any kind of negative impact on staff?
I don't think so, when, you know, when people are looking for jobs, they're, I mean, workers' comp is not on their.
No, yes. Nobody's ever planning to get hurt.
You know, right, well, right, and, you know, I will say, I mean, what we are doing is we are making, um, gains where it matters. Um, and so what we cover for insurance, um, is positive and where we're going with the raises that we've been able to give. And, you know, we still have a ways to go, there's no doubt about it, but we have, you know, over the last two years, we've made a lot of progress. I mean, it.
Huge in comparison to previous, you know, in, in the past.
Right, so, and so there's other, you know, benefits as well with our T M R S, and actually, that's one of the things, um, I've been looking at and analyzing our, our T M R S, which is our Texas Municipal Retirement, uh, system, excuse me, system. And so right now, we are at, um, when we've matched, when somebody is vested, which is five years, we match one point five to one, most cities match two to one. Um, and even on this T M R S, there are, a lot of our employees are not recognizing the huge benefit that that program is, it's a huge benefit. Um, yeah, and so, but they, they don't always recognize that. But I think that that is a more tangible improvement to recognize our employees that will be recognize all employees, um, going forward. And so I'm looking at trying to inch that up over the next couple of years, um, so that we can get more what is industry, uh, standard, which is two to one and, uh, a seven percent. Right now, we're one point five to one at a five percent.
I was going to say, we had that, yeah.
Right, well, and we offer supplemental. Right. And we offer supplemental through Aflac, of course they pay for it, but, um,
Right.
But we do, there's short-term, long-term disability. So I think, you know, when you look at also with our, some of the things that we've done, um, the number of holidays that we have, and it might not seem like a lot, but it does add up. Um, you know, most cities have eleven, maybe twelve paid holidays a year. We have thirteen. Um, and we have two personal days, uh, annually. So, uh, I think where it impacts the most, um, I think, you know, I think we're making progress and we do, you know, we, we do have a good benefit package for our employees.
Is there a benefit to maybe doing a hybrid? Just if you looked at the numbers of the hybrid, like, let's say we did a hundred percent for twelve weeks or seventy percent for twenty-four, would that make a big difference on the?
Yeah, well, then it becomes just a management thing. Um, I, you know, and again, what I'm trying to promote and bring forward is best practices, meaning what most cities do. And this seventy percent twelve weeks is what most cities do.
Thank you.
I move to approve the updates to section nine point zero four of the personnel policy as presented.
Second, motion second, all in favor. Aye, none opposed. Thank you. All right, yes. Eighteen. Discussion in necessary action regarding acceptance of Commissioner Place for Gary Mercer's resignation.
Well, um, as you know, I, um, uh, as soon as I heard, I did, and this was, you know, in the last three weeks, um, the Commissioner Mercer submitted his resignation. It was contingent on when his house closed. Um, he was thinking it was going to be October thirty-first and it was. Um, and so that's why we're, you know, we.
Cloud and dust.
We're bringing it forward now, so, um, yes, and use his resignation letter in the packet.
Motion on that?
I move to approve the acceptance of Commissioner Place for Gary Mercer's resignation.
A second.
Motion second, all in favor. Aye, none opposed. Thank you. All right, executive session, pursuant to Texas Government Code, January chapter five fifty-one, subjector D, Texas Open Media Act, the Act, City Commission will recess.
Well, exactly. But once again, people that don't, they don't learn.
And we're not, we don't hold it that way often, so we don't really notice it.
We're back in session at six thirty-seven P M. And from our executive session and, uh, turn it over.
Uh, I move to appoint Rob Durham to serve the remainder of the term for place four expiring May twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor.
Aye.
Good. All right.
I'm sorry. I, I looked, it was all I.
What happened? I'm sorry.
Was it all I?
No, I'm still no on that. Yeah.
Okay. Any items you want to think about being placed on next time around? Thing comes up, we contact city managers. Nothing? Six thirty-nine P M, we're adjourned. Thank all of you.
He's no better, you from the side.
I got an answer.
So we have, um,